That removes even more pressure from these cases going as quickly as they should. Because now the commanders are going to be accountable under ours. If they're not accountable anymore, then that's a problem for the JAGs. That's a problem for the JAGs. That's a problem for the criminal investigators. That's not our problem. That is an unintended consequence that would, in the long run, hurt victims, not help them. And it's important to know, Gwen, that, as Kelly said, the victim community is not monolithic on this. We've had victims call our office, victims that have been featured in some of the documentaries about this subject that have said, "We think your approach is better." They are feeling, I think, marginalized because, as sometimes we've felt marginalized, because the other side has wanted to make this argument about victims versus uniforms. That's a false premise. This argument is about how we can protect victims the best.
And Senator, finally, how do you get to zero tolerance on something like this? No matter what your approach is, it's one thing for commanders, it's one thing for presidents to say, "We won't tolerate this," or for members of the Senate, but how do you make that happen?
I think we make that happen, first of all, within the chain of command. If you condone this within your unit, or you don't support victims, you should be fired, and that piece of accountability, coming from the top, flowing through every level of the chain of command. And also, I can tell you, Gwen, the reason we're going to push towards zero tolerance, in addition to training and the other provisions, the lawyers, the counsel that the victims will get in our bill, is that Claire and I are not going to let this go. We serve on the Armed Services Committee, and we will be asking people, not every year, but every few months, what is happening, and please report back to the committee to make sure that we hold people's feet to the fire on these important provisions. And you should know, there is a lot of agreement between us and Senator Gillibrand on so many of these provisions. And I know whatever we report out, it will be strong, and it is not the status quo.
Senator Kelly, I, out of New Hampshire, and Senator Claire McCaskey of Missouri, Republican, Democrat. Good to see you working together. Thanks a lot.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Gwen.
Again, the major developments of the day. Edward Snowden, the leaker of U.S. surveillance secrets, was granted asylum in Russia. The U.S. criticized the move and said that he should have been returned to face espionage charges. Ariel Castro was given life without parole, plus 1,000 years, for holding three women captive in his Cleveland house and raping them repeatedly over a decade. And Egypt's Interior Ministry offered safe passage to thousands of supporters of ousted President Mohamed Morsi if they end their sit-ins in Cairo.
Online, getting to the top of the Laffer curve. Kwame Holman explains.
Arthur Laffer is the economist behind Reaganomics and the famous arch that predicts the ideal tax rate for generating revenue. He spoke with our own Paul Solomon to explain how his theory applies to states. And a new study shows Americans' feelings about their economic prospects divide sharply by race. The economic optimism of minorities surpasses that of whites by one of the largest margins in decades. Read about that on our homepage. All that and more is on our website, newshour.pbs.org. Judy.
And that's the NewsHour for tonight. On Friday, we'll look at the latest round of jobs numbers and a new effort to boost the employment of those with disabilities. I'm Judy Woodruff.
And I'm Jeffrey Brown. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with David Brooks and Ruth Marcus, among others. Thanks for joining us. Good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by BNSF Railway.
The William and Flora Hewlett Foundation, working to solve social and environmental problems at home and around the world.
And with the ongoing support of these institutions and foundations. And... This program was made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting and by contributions to your PBS station from viewers like you. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the Thursday, August 1st Capitola Planning Commission meeting to order. Wait for the roll, please.
Commissioner Walt.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
And Chairperson Smith.
Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight's meeting is cablecast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and it's being recorded to be replayed at 12 noon on the Saturday following the meeting on Community Television of Santa Cruz County, Charter Channel 71, and Comcast Channel 25. You can also view the meetings on the city's website at cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman. And as a reminder, if you have a cellphone in your pocket or purse, please turn it off during the meeting. And if you come up to speak, if you could sign your name on the roster so Linda can get it correctly in the minutes. Okay? With that, we'll bring it to Oral Communications. And the first item under Oral Communications are additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. No changes to the agenda? That brings us to Item 2B, Public Comments. These are for... This is an opportunity for the public to address any item that's not on the agenda. So if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on any particular issue that's not on the agenda, now is the time. Okay. See no one then? We'll bring it to Item C, Commission Comments. Any comments from commissioners?
None.
Okay. I'd like to bring up one. On Sunday during the wharf-to-wharf, Whole Foods Market had another event that took about a third of their entire parking lot, and they blocked off both driveways, not the Wells Fargo driveway, but both driveways, so there was no exit out of the entire parking lot where you could go east towards... back towards the Village. And so I called Katie and asked her to inquire about it. It appears they didn't have a permit to do this. And Katie, correct me if I'm in error here, but she spoke to the police department, and they said that they didn't... Whole Foods didn't need a permit unless they had amplified music, and they could block off their driveways. And I said, "I don't think that's correct, because they have a requirement to provide parking." So that's kind of where we're at right now. This is, at least to the best of my knowledge and recollection, this is the fourth time they've done that. And the other three times were when Susan was here, and she spoke to them, and they continue to do this. And I suggested to Katie that if there's a conversation with them, we need to really let them know that they can't continue to do this.
Well, block off entries, right?
Entries and exits.
And not have... You're not speaking about having an outdoor event if it's not amplified music, but you're talking specifically to blocking entries and exits.
Well, they had them blocked off. They had booths set up throughout the parking lot.
So I'm just asking, is your whole... Is your issue with them, with the exits and entrances, or the event itself?
My issue is more with the exits and entrances.
Yeah.
And if you went into the parking lot from any of the other driveways, you had to go exit on 41st and go north.
Right.
You couldn't come back towards the Village unless you went all the way down to Claire's.
Right.
And plus, I think it makes it really difficult for Long's Drugs for their drive-up prescription window also to access.
The interesting part of this, because we're redoing the general plan and the zoning ordinance, is really, these outside events need to be cleared, according to the ordinance the way it is today. So if staff feels that this is not a tenable position to be in, that you don't want to approve these things, we ought to change this in the new ordinance and the zoning plan. But, you know, personally, I agree with Mick. Blocking the exits is really bad. In fact, the design at Capitola Road and 41st is not good.
It's terrible.
If you're trying to get out of that shopping center and come back towards the Village. Having said that, I'd like to just say one more thing. These outside events bother me, and I have been saying for a long time that we're getting more and more clutter.
Ron, you need your mic. You need your mic.
I'm sorry. One more clutter in the 41st Avenue area. I have, before both of you coming here, complained numerous times about the garden part of Orchard Supply being moved to the front parking lot. And yet, they have never asked for a permit or anything else. And outdoor sales in these areas are not allowed, according to our ordinance. So if we're going to change it, let's change it. But if you go over in front of Save Mart, for example, the number of vending machines in the walkway really is an impediment to people that are handicapped. Because if you're in front of Save Mart, they have the storage of the carts, and then they have these vending machines. And to get through there is making it difficult. The vending machines are everything from DVDs for movies, to recycling materials, to you name it. And, you know, we ought to be sending a letter out to these areas and say, "If they're going to start doing merchandising outside, they need to come in and get permits." And get really tough with them. That's my comment.
The thing that concerned me primarily in this was the police department suggesting they didn't need a permit for this. And not only the drop... blocking off the entrances and the exits, but also they took up about a third of the parking on their side.
When I spoke to the police department, I specifically asked about the entrances and exits, not the parking. So I just want to make that clear, that during our conversation, they were saying that a permit was not necessary to block an entrance or an exit.
Okay.
So we'll follow up.
I suggested, as I said, I suggested to Katie that we need to let them know in certain terms that they can't do this. And I just wanted to run that by the commission to make sure there was a consensus with that.
You have my consensus.
Okay. Then that brings us to Staff Comments. We don't have any comments. No comments from the staff. Okay? Item 3A is the approval of the minutes from the July 18th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
A small correction on page seven.
Seven.
Item B, 507 Plum Street, the first paragraph is Commissioner Ortiz recused herself because she owns property close to the project. I wish I owned that property. I rent that property, and I think it should probably say, "Because I own a business."
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And otherwise, I move approval.
Second.
Motion to second, then with the correction is noted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to Item 4, the Consent Calendar. We only have one item on the consent calendar tonight. And these items are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one motion unless there is an opportunity or a request to have a separate discussion from any member of the public or a member of the commission. Anyone wishing to discuss any of the items?
I see two members of the public that might be here for that, and I'm wondering if they wanted to just observe or speak about it.
What's the item?
Is this having to do with the Wharf Road?
Item 4A, the retaining wall on Wharf Road.
Is there anyone who wants to speak on that? Not quite yet. I'm just asking the question. I think they're here for that.
Oh, okay. Well, now is the time, then.
Excuse me, I need to recuse myself.
So what this is, this is an application for an emergency coastal permit for a slope stabilization system to be installed due to a landslide in the AR zone, 1840 Wharf Road, say, retaining wall behind a home to stop the bluff from slipping down. Yes, sir?
What guarantees are there that if this structure is put in, that now the water doesn't run off into the next-door property and cause erosion on the lot next door? It's only a few years ago that the lot next to this one had a lot of work done on there and cement put on there to reroute the water. And so that's... One of the big concerns I have is that you're simply rerouting the water to the place next door, or to the other side, or someplace. So that's one concern. Secondly, there's quite a bit of noise coming from that place now during the thing. There's a compressor, I think, or some sort of a motor that's running about from 9 to 3:00 or so. I don't know whether it's a compressor or something. If there's anything they can do to reduce the noise on that, we greatly appreciate it.
Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, my name's Steve Walsh.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can't answer. I don't know if anybody else here can answer about the engineering on it, but I know... I don't know if you've seen the plan?
I have.
But, okay, so it doesn't act as a dam, but it looks like, you know, it's just a retaining wall that's... Whatever water would flow would flow right over the top like it was before, but that's just a guess on my part.
If it flows over... If it flows over the top, it's got to go somewhere.
Yeah.
So my concern is, where is it going? Is it going to undermine the next-door lots? What's the deal?
Can't answer that.
And is there any relationship to the erosion in this particular area with the work that was done a few years ago on the lot next door? Which I'm sure was permitted. Those are just kind of interesting questions.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Jeff Dutton. I'm the general contractor. There was no flow of water problem. The problem was that the soil is not compacted. And as we put in the helix anchors, we were finding indeed that the findings of the soil engineer were correct, that the soil itself under the foundation was not compacted. The retaining walls, they've had to put in two. We started with a design of one, and as Don Thorpe surveyed, he found that the soil immediately under the... The end of the foundation was not compacted, and put a bearing wall and five more helix anchors. The sound that is made is the sound of drilling in the helix anchors. They've put in initially five, and they are putting in the last 18. Those will be completed hopefully by Saturday, Monday at the very latest. And all 18 helix anchors and the compressor will go away. The foundation will then be poured, and then we can start re-putting the deck back together.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for anyone? No? Anyone else wishing to speak? No? We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and decision. Any comments?
I did, right? I go up there a day and take a look at it, and could tell you that I have like a hydraulic device, I guess, to put those anchors in, and it looked to me like the way the retaining wall was set up is right against the foundation, so I couldn't see how the water runoff would change. And I didn't see a problem with it. I could...
Yeah, I would concur. And I think it's just normal construction noise, and it's within the allowable hours. So it sounds like it's going to be done in a day or so. Does anyone attempt to make a motion on this?
I would move approval of this item.
Second.
A motion to second, then, to approve the emergency coastal permit for the slope stabilization at Wharf Road. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to Item 5, Public Hearings. They're intended to provide an opportunity for the public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. We follow the procedure, staff presentation, public discussion, Planning Commission discussion, and we close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for a decision. So the first item we have on here tonight is 2001 41st Avenue. This is a design permit to remodel an existing commercial building, The Burger King on 41st, with a sign program and a permit to remove a tree.
Thank you.
Katie?
Tonight before you is a design permit, sign permit, and tree removal for 2001 41st Avenue. The current site is utilized by Burger King, and it is a renovation of the Burger King building there. This is an aerial in front of you. The Burger King is actually unique in that it is located on two corners, 41st and Claire's, and also the corner of Claire's and 40th to the rear. The exterior remodel includes a new exterior... Includes all new exterior materials and a roof design. They're proposing painted stucco with reveals in both tan and debonics. New brick along the base of the building, aluminum windows and doors. They're going to remove the sunroom off the front of the building. Also introduce metal canopies and an illuminated parapet band. And Rich, if you could pass these over to the Planning Commissioners, the material boards. The original application included a wall sign on this facade looking out to the parking lot. The applicant agreed to remove that sign because it does not have a street frontage, and wall signs are not permitted on sides of buildings that do not have street frontage. This is the front elevation off of 41st Street. The new materials are carried through this elevation. I'll be... In my presentation, I'll later talk about the signs and what does not comply with signage. The new side elevation introduces a new pay window and one wall sign. So you can now see they'll be... When the cars drive through, first they'll pay at the first window, and at the second window, they'll receive their food. And on the rear of the building, they're enclosing the garage and the... Not the garage, sorry. The trash area. And the doors will face the back of the building rather than the... Previously, they faced the side driveway. For parking, there are 37 spaces required based on the interior space of the restaurant. 60 spaces exist. There's actually 62 spaces, but two will be taken away for the trash removal area and to assist in meeting requirements for the drive-through. Circulation, there'll be a new pay window, as I previously mentioned, and also the bicycle racks at the side entrance will be maintained on-site. No other changes to circulation are proposed. Landscaping, they requested a tree removal at the drive-through exit, also along the front. Corner off of 41st and Claire's, they're proposing to fill in that area with more shrubs and ivy. And this is a... These images are of the tree that is to be removed. It's a carrotwood tree. There are dying limbs, and it's also on that bottom right corner, you can see the damage that's happening to the curb and ongoing issues within the pavement. The 41st Avenue Design Guidelines require that one 24-inch box be planted per two car spaces. There are 60 spaces total, so 30 trees are required. Originally, it was 31, but because of the two spaces being removed, it's 30. And Condition Number of 11 requires that no less than 30 trees be planted. So now on to signs. Within the signs, currently Burger King has two signs, one along 41st to remain, and then the one at the corner of Claire's and 40th is to... The applicant agreed to removing it in order to get the wall sign on the Claire's facade. So one new wall sign on the Claire's facade, and then the applicant did not want to remove the monument sign on 41st, but would like the Planning Commission to review their proposal, including two new wall signs off on the 41st facade. Also, there are directional signs throughout the property, and those will be updated to just with the updated Burger King colors, but no new logos. So there is one noncompliance in this application, and that is that per our sign code in two different areas, under the monument sign section and within the wall sign section of the code, they both are explicit in that if you have a monument sign, you cannot have a wall sign unless it's not visible from the same facade. And then also, if you have a wall sign, you're allowed to have a wall sign unless there is already an existing monument sign identifying that business. So in reviewing this, the applicant has a choice to either keep the existing monument sign, or to remove the monument sign and install a wall sign to come into compliance with our code. The proposed wall signs on the front facade off 41st also don't comply with the code 100%. There's... Two wall signs are proposed at 56 square feet. The code allows one wall sign, up to one square foot per square foot of frontage on that property. It's... It is wide. It's about 170 feet wide. So per the code, they could have a much larger wall sign. They're proposing two with a total of 56 square feet. If they were attached in some manner, it would meet our sign code for front facade if the monument sign did not exist. The Home of the Whopper sign projects 22 inches from the building. It's attached to the top of the canopy, and within the sign code, there is an exception allowed by the... Within the Planning Commission's purview to the requirement of the wall sign being attached to the building. So the Planning Commission could make a decision there to allow for these... That exception of how far it is from the wall. Staff recommends approval of the application for the design permit, tree removal, and sign application, including a Condition Number 13, that the existing monument sign along Claire's Street must be removed from the site prior to the installation of the new wall sign on Claire's Street facade, and that the existing monument sign along 41st is authorized. No wall signs along 41st Avenue are authorized, and no additional signs are allowed without the approval of Planning Commission. The applicant did want to speak tonight and has provided a presentation.
Katie, I'm looking at the conditions in the agenda packet, and they only go up to 12.
You know, I think there was an issue with the numbering that was caught today.
11 has your 14.
Yeah, there's a condition between 11 and 12 that doesn't have a number on it.
That's not part of 11.
Yep. So that should have been its own condition.
It should be 13.
12, and then 13. 12 would be changed to 13 for windows signs may not exceed 1/3.
Okay.
I apologize. I apologize.
Okay, and then just, just for clarification too, back on page thirty-nine, it makes a reference to that same condition in regards to the signs and it calls out number thirteen, so we probably should change that also. It's in, it's in the fifth paragraph on page thirty-nine of the staff report.
Thank you.
All done?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll open this up then to the public and open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Is the applicant present?
My name is Steve Thomas and I'm the Director of Operations for The Burger King. I also brought our architect along, Alan Chambers, that can answer any questions that you may have. Appreciate your time.
Sir, can you speak in the mic?
Appreciate your time this evening, Commission members. I want to see what we are trying to accomplish. We have been Capitola since nineteen eighty, providing jobs and for a lot of young men and women. We do a lot of other things in the community, supporting little league teams and we have a foundation that passes out scholarships to students and employees that we are proud to announce. We yet gave away eight scholarships this year, including two to local students here. This is some pictures of a restaurant that we did in Salinas and as you can see, this is the before picture with the mansard roof and the Burger King logo. And you can move up one. And this is the after look and you can see the Burger King logo. This one has a different type of awning on it than the one we're proposing for Capitola. And the next image is a side view and this is the home of the Whopper sign that Katie referenced. And you'll, you'll see some better pictures as we move along. Go to the next one. This is the one that we recently completed in Santa Cruz on SoCal Avenue. This was the before aft, before picture. And this is our after picture and this has the same type of awning that we're applying for Capitola. And you can see the logo facing SoCal Avenue. And the next shot, this is at night view, so you can again see the home of the Whopper sign. And this is kind of our trademark that we're asking the Commission to approve tonight along with the logo sign. It's, it's a vital part of our image and our visibility around Forty First Avenue. Our restaurant sits some twenty-plus feet off the back of the building and I do have another shot that I should show you. This is another one in Seaside, California. Again, different type of awning here and you can see the, the home of the Whopper and the Burger King logo sign. This is a picture of our interior image. We're trying to make it more upscale, you know, we have lounge areas, new seating. And this is one booth that I particularly like, it's a new image style dining room. And our restaurant, if you've been in it, it definitely needs an update. Okay? We got a next shot. Now this is as you approach our restaurant. So our monument sign is buried in there. I don't know if you can see it, but it's a little size. It's about eighty inches off the ground, but with the landscaping trees, and this is with no cars. But, you know, that street's always busy with traffic. And i-if you're in the third lane and there's cars on the right side, you won't even see the sign. What I'm proposing is that you allow us to have the home of the Whopper sign facing Forty First along with the logo. And in our original proposal, we had even asked for a sign facing the parking lot. Now we took it off after talking to Katie and she let us know it wasn't allowed, but we are allowed to have a sign facing the rear of the property, Fortieth Street, which is allowed per code. And we would like to relocate that towards the parking lot. Right across from our, our building is a commercial building that has at least ten businesses that face our parking lot that all have signs facing our parking lot. Right across from us, Mattress Discounters has signs that also face the parking lot. And we're just asking for that same courtesy. When you look up and down the street, that building would look so plain with no logo or no, no element to say this is Burger King. And again, we do have the monument sign, but we're asking for your consideration for the extra signage. That's it for right now. I do have some other shots I can show you a little later.
Any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I do. I have one.
Yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we go back a couple of images to the night scene and I'd like to verify that the sofa that we're seeing that's red is the same type that you're proposing for?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So that's lit from below with LED lights that you can't see, but, or above?
It's, it's from above and it shines down against the metal.
Okay.
But it's very small LED lights, you know, not, not visible beyond that what you see. I want you to get a chance to see it at night, so you can get to feel for it. It's like McDonald's with the golden arches and Burger King, we have our, our red band. You know, it's just a vital part of our image. Burger King has come up this new design and they mandate you have these signs and we feel like we'd be at a disadvantage if we didn't have that opportunity.
And can we go back to the approaching slide?
It's the last one.
Okay. There we go.
There it is.
So, Mr. Thomas, do you think that when you take off the mansard and, and the, the signage will, seems like it will be up in that area, the new signage, the home of the Whopper and your button sign?
It, it would be.
It would be.
It would be.
Yeah, good. I think it should be. I think that's a good spot for it.
Yeah.
I think your monument sign actually is probably not your best feature at this point, but...
No, it's not. You know, in our original proposal, we again asked for one facing the parking lot. That would even be a plus. I, I know it's not allowed, but when I, maybe I can ask the Commission members, because I drive up and down Forty First for the last two months looking at various businesses and I see a lot that have signs facing the parking lot. KFC, Mattress Discounters, Starbucks, Citibank across from us, and H&R Block. I mean, I just see a lot of, so I wonder if they can help me understand, did the code change or why is a sign not allowed facing the parking lot?
In most cases, you're about eighty feet closer to the street than most of those that you just, other than the mattress company. For example, McDonald's sits back a long ways, familiar with the year price. In fact, I hope I wasn't the individual that got you to remove the sign on your drive-up window. I was in there one day picking a drive-up and it said, you had a little sign, it was very innoc, it wasn't really noticeable to most people. And it says, "No solicitation," and yet you're soliciting for your endowment program and the next day it was gone. And I thought, is it because this application is before us or, or what's happening? Because it wasn't a, an offensive sign. I just thought, it's kind of funny. You guys can solicit, but nobody else can have a, a solicitation sign like if somebody was having a, a thing that you were sponsoring for a school or something else.
Right.
It was...
We, we, yeah, you're right. We, twice a year, we have a sponsorship program where we sell little coupons and we take a hundred percent of those proceeds and give them back to the community and form the scholarships for students.
I figure anybody who pays the rent can put up whatever they want.
Yeah. It was just really terrible.
I have another question. So, so you're wanting signage in the back facing Fortieth, but I'm curious as to why you don't want your signage, because we do allow when you're on a corner to have signage facing both one in, on one street and the other. And to me, it would seem more advantageous to Burger King to have the signage facing Claire's on the drive-up side so that everybody driving north on Forty First would be seeing your...
Correct. That one is approved. Katie, have you...
On the building. That one's building, I'm sorry.
The one I'm not having is the one facing the parking lot.
Fortieth.
Got it.
Right.
Thank you.
No, the other one. North.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't see one on that side of the building.
You're asking for in lieu of the, not having the one facing Fortieth, to have it face the parking lot?
Well, I'm actually asking for both. I, I think it's important definitely to have the one facing Fortieth, I mean Forty First.
You want three sides of your building covered.
Right. I mean, because we're a unique building. We have, you know, we're street sides. Well, we have Claire's Street, we have Fortieth and Forty First.
Right.
But I don't want to do Claire's Street. I mean, pardon...
Fortieth, Fortieth.
But I would like to do the parking lot. When you come out the Burger King, you look at the building right next to us, you see a lot of signs. And I think as you come down Fortieth, if you can go back to that, that shot, as you come down...
Oh, I just...
Okay.
Just want to see exactly what elevation.
This is the elevation. So this will be our main entrance to the restaurant. And if you look at it, it's just plain, there's nothing there. I mean, you see windows, but there's nothing, it's just, it's just a bare look. I think it wouldn't do justice to the building to have it look plain like that.
Would your logo be satisfactory on that side?
Yes, it would be.
And Katie, our ordinance does allow for one to be on the Fortieth, Fortieth Street sign, the rear of the building.
It does. It allows for a wall sign.
Right.
On any facade with a street frontage.
Okay.
So that is why I'd ask them to take it off of this side to comply with the code.
Okay, so so you're asking, you, you will not have one on the Fortieth Street side, but you would like one facing the parking lot?
Right, I would take that option and just move it to the parking lot.
Got it.
I, I had our original sign package here that shows it with the facing the parking lot.
Kind of a misnomer because on the Fortieth Avenue sign, there's actually two freestanding signs. Both of them being menu signs, menu boards in your drive-up kiosk and they are visible from Fortieth Avenue because I go there all the time.
That is correct, sir.
So again, just for clarification, you're not asking for any verbiage on that north side facing the parking lot?
No, sir.
Just a logo?
Just a logo. We'll make it a small logo.
Is it, it's the logo with the words Burger King on it?
Yes, that one that you see, ma'am, right down the top, right.
The dot, yeah, okay.
I think it's, what, twenty-eight square feet?
Six foot in diameter.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Thomas? Thank you, sir. If we have other questions?
I'm sorry, one more question. The, the term was for the tree that's going to be removed, that it was not a good spot for the tree, not conducive to the growth of the tree. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, it, it has dying limbs and also it's, it's overgrown for the little island, so it has curves on both sides and so it's breaking up the curb.
Right.
I'd like to just replace it with two new trees on the property. We're going to remove the monument sign on Claire's Street and Fortieth, so we'll put, you know, a tree down in that area and probably one in the same lawn area.
Would you be opposed to replacing it with a tree there on the frontage of the property that didn't have that same root activity? There are trees that don't have...
In that same spot or just on Forty First Avenue?
Somewhere on Forty First Avenue.
I have, no problem. We can do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. What we're talking about is removing the monument sign on Claire's and Fortieth, back on the corner.
Correct.
Having the signage on the Claire's, the wall sign on the Claire's side, wall sign on the Forty First Avenue side and removing the monument sign in, in front of it?
No.
No.
Leaving that monument sign.
Correct.
And having a logo on the parking lot.
Parking lot, right.
Okay.
And the home of the Whopper will only be on the Forty First Avenue side?
Right. In total, we have four faces with that monument, two on each side of Forty First and two on each side. So we're going to trade four faces and, and we'll have five actually, because we'll still have the monument on Forty First and then three wall logos with the one home of the Whopper sign. I think it will look nice and as you seen from the other previous photos, it really ties it in together.
Okay.
You know, when I, I heard your home of the Whopper and being from Capitola, the first thing I thought of was fish.
Stated by the sea.
Yeah, the other non-compliance issue is the twenty-two inch projection rather than twelve as the ordinance calls out. Any questions regarding that?
And that is because it's attached to the canopy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Commission members.
If we have other questions, we'll ask you to come back up. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item, the remodel of Burger King on Forty First Avenue and their sign program? See no, and then we'll close the public portion, bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
I'll make some comments. I think that the remodel is going to look much better than what's out there. As you know, I'm probably the most outspoken about signage and I think the amount of signs and I think the staff's recommendation with regards to the north elevation was a good one, but I can go along with what I think I've heard my fellow commissioners say that a logo sign on that north frontage where their main door will be, will be fine. I'm not enamored by, I, I went down and looked at the one in Salinas. I'm not enamored by the home of the Whopper, especially at night, the way it's lit and the rest of it. That's their new corporate image. I don't think it'll stop me from voting for it. I think this is going to be a vast improvement, but I think we really have to get a handle on the number of signs. If you're on a corner, you really only have, a sign only does one thing. It tells you at, you're at the place that you want to go to. It's not something, you know, that, that sign, that, that photograph that you showed in front of twenty-one, twenty-one Forty First Avenue in a southbound direction, nobody can see any of your signs from that particular picture because you're way too far away from your building. In fact, you don't even see your monument sign from there. You could be in any lane of traffic, the inside included, and you won't see your monument sign. I think your monument sign does you a disservice, to be perfectly honest with you. And hopefully, these other signs will call greater attention to your building and I could vote for it with just a logo sign on the north side and leaving everything else that you proposed in our staff report, not necessarily what you told us tonight.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Yeah?
Yeah, this is going to be a great, great service to Capitola as well. You'll do really well with this remodel. I've got a, a couple of issues and that is, I do think as proposed, as you're asking, it's a little bit too much signage, especially for being so close to the street on one of our best corners that we've got. And I'm worried about setting a precedent today. I know that we've got things that are there from days gone by. I'm a little worried about the number of signs all over. I'd feel more comfortable, and maybe we can talk about it a little, I'm, I'm kind of open about this, but I'd be, feel more comfortable if we asked them to get rid of the monument sign, gave them the north-facing sign and the front and let them keep the Claire's sign. That's, you know, it's in the middle of a grassy area, it's kind of low-key, it's, it's a spot where they're not getting a lot of coverage from that four-way intersection, but I'd really like to see that monument sign, especially if we're going to give them the north-facing, I'd really like to ask them to take the monument sign down. My other issue is to keep a tree somewhere in the front and I would let them decide where they wanted to put it, but I think we're trying to create a warmer feeling on Forty First Avenue and if, and we don't want to take away trees, we want to add trees. You've got so many great trees all around the property, but for us, for when people are going down Forty First Avenue, that's really where we want them. And I know that a lot of times in a lot of spots, they will hide your building and your logo, but I trust that you'd be able to find a, a good spot for yourself as long as it's on Forty First, not on Claire's. And I called the Water District, the Santa Cruz Water District, this afternoon because we've got, we've had this come up so many times about not being sure what they're ask, what they're going to ask of an applicant, what they expect of us. And so I said, "Do you have any, do you have any demands or prohibitions on irrigation for your applicants?" And he said, "No, we leave that up to the jurisdiction." So I was happy to see that you asked for drip irrigation in here. They'll review that drip irrigation when they review the plans, the, the landscape plans for you. But I want to make sure that we also are clear about the amount of new planting, planting that goes on, especially on Forty First Avenue, because it's, I'm sorry to say, looked a bit ratty over the last few years.
I will make you guys proud.
Okay, great. I saw some good pictures, so...
You've seen the other ones, they were very beautiful.
Okay, I'm going to hold you to that. Good, thank you. That's all.
TJ, any comments?
I, I think I could go along with adding the sign to the, the north side of the building in lieu of having it on the Fortieth Street side, which our ordinance would allow. I think it would allow that visibility of, of knowing what that building is. I recognize the old Burger Kings. I think these new ones probably may need some signage just to draw your attention and let you know it's a new, it's a new design change. So I happen to see one of these, one in Scotts Valley that is, is the same. So I, I could concur with Commissioner Graves that I could live with the one on the north side if we don't put it on the Fortieth Street Avenue side. I, I think I saw the landscaping, our, our city landscaper recommended a eucalyptus. I don't know, there may be different varieties of eucalyptus, but heaven forbid, that's a, I, I live with those behind my house and I know they're, they're a national treasure here in Capitola, but so I, I'll leave that up for them to decide, but I don't know, do you any better than the tree you have there? Aside from that, I think... Aside from that, I think I could support the three signs. Well, let's see, the Home of the Whopper sign on the 41st, the logo sign on 41st, the north side, the parking lot sign having that, and then the Claire's Street. And then removing the Claire's monument sign.
Linda?
I think I'm in agreement with everything that the commissioners are saying. On the north side, what makes a difference for me is that the building that they're next to does have its frontage mainly on that same parking lot. So it's not a street, but in the way that the buildings come together, it acts like a street. So I don't have a problem moving that sign around from 40th Avenue to that side as long as it's just the dot, not the whole thing. On the front, the Home of the Whopper and the logo sign, if they were connected together, would be one sign and it's not too large. So I can see allowing, from a design perspective, for that to be separated. So I'd call it one sign separated. And I too think it's going to be much, much, much more beautiful with the remodel. And having a tree on the front on 41st would really enhance that whole corner. So, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I support the application. But I want to be clear that the only signs I want to see on the north side and the south side are the logo signs. No verbiage, okay. Yeah, if there's anything I'm probably the most uncomfortable with, it's the Home of the Whopper verbiage on there. But I think I can allow that to go through and support it. And I do think you'd need the monument sign on 41st Avenue just for that extra added visibility. So with that, would someone like to attempt a motion?
My understanding is that, I'll try a motion that satisfies Gail also with the idea that we include a condition that allows for a tree to go back where they're removing the tree, something that is not invasive to the curb gutter and walkway there. And I agree with you, the idea of our staff or our consultant coming up with the eucalyptus.
There's 400 species of eucalyptus.
Yeah, I understand that. Most of them from Australia.
There's so many wonderful eucalyptus that would fit with that. I'm sure that a landscape architect, you know-
Could figure it out.
Could you clarify in your motion tonight exactly which monument sign you'd like to have stay?
Yeah, well, I'll do that. I'm going to try to enumerate the signs. On the north side of the building that is facing the parking lot, there will be only the button sign with Burger King. Am I right? On the east side of the building which faces 41st Avenue, there will be the Burger King dot and the Home of the Whopper sign. On the south side of the building which faces Claire's Avenue, there will be the dot sign Burger King only. On the monument sign at the corner of Claire's and 40th Avenue, and even though it's more on Claire's than 40th, will be removed. The monument sign out in front, I'd like to see it removed like Gail, but I don't think there's the votes, so. And what else do you need? Is that all the signs?
Yep.
I think it is.
Can I just do a little amendment to that tree and let them put it anywhere on 41st that they see fit?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure. I think my problem with that, Gail, was that when they put another tree on 41st Avenue, they totally removed the idea of the need for the monument sign.
So Ron, in your motion, all the other conditions apply?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Are you clear, Katie?
I am. So the monument sign on 41st stays and the one on Claire's is removed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll look forward to seeing the new building out there. Okay, that brings us to item 5B. This is an informational update on sign content to respond to a question that Ron raised at the last meeting. Rich? Katie?
During the last meeting, there was concern for a sign up the street, a new sign that was installed in that the sign stated the word restaurant and within the land use, a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant that with service is not allowed per the approved plans that came before you previously. We reached out to the city attorney to get some guidance on this, as Ron requested. And in that, he was very clear in stating that, you know, we're allowed to regulate land use on site. When it comes to the content of a site, it's a different review in that if it was really misleading, it's something that the Better Business Bureau would take a look at. But where it says restaurant and there is food being served, it's more of a counter and deli-style and to-go food. But it's not, it wouldn't fall under that category of contacting the Better Business Bureau and we don't have the right to tell them that they cannot have the word restaurant on the sign. So in looking at our sign code, we do have a statement there that no such sign shall list the products to be sold or the services to be provided. And I highlighted this to our city attorney as well and said, "Well, you know, we do have this regulation in there that is clear about products being sold or services." And we're going to take another, a deeper look into this when the original ordinance was passed to see. It may be constitutional based on the government's interest and what they were trying to advance at the time of adopting the regulation. And then we'd have to look at what they were trying to accomplish in advancing that regulation and whether or not we could advance that concern with a content-neutral regulation rather than regulating the contents within the sign. I did want to give you one example of how this kind of plays out. So in a content-neutral regulation, you typically address time, place, and manner. So when it can be displayed, where and how you can display a sign. And an example of this would be, the sign in front of you is a, I'm guessing FNB is probably a bank. This is not a local sign, but they show the temperature. And so whenever the temperature changes, this sign will change. When can it be shown? It's typically with, when it's a business and that's the type of land use. Where? Typically, your sign code will say, "In your front yard, setback," as we discussed tonight, "On a corner property, street frontage, and within commercial zoning districts." The manner in which it can be shown within our code, this type of sign would not be allowed. A monument sign is regulated to eight feet, 35 square feet max, and specific materials. In our code today, we prohibit animated signs. So they couldn't have a sign that is animated and changes over time. It would have to stay and show you a constant five degrees. So this is how you can regulate what's within your sign for content. By the way, when it meets the where, the when, where, and manner in which. So you're really regulating your aesthetics and the placement within your sign regulation and not so much because of the freedom of speech of the content of what is said within the sign. So with that, I'm welcome to answer any questions.
I'd just like to make a comment because I brought this up. John was nice enough to forward the memo to me at the same time he did to you and I put in a call and of course, he was gone on that day and I have talked to John since. And I don't disagree with anything he said except the last paragraph, the "in regards," and I'll read it to you, "In regards to the specific example of 509 Day Avenue, the city does not have the authority to regulate the use of the word restaurant." I agree with that. The next thing, though, it says, "The zoning ordinance regulates land use." And if a restaurant isn't a land use, I don't know what is. And it would seem to me the only time that we could deal with a restaurant sign outside would be if they all of a sudden turn the inside of the building into a restaurant. They don't have a permit for that under our zoning ordinance. And I'm satisfied with that.
Any questions for Katie? Seeing none. Rich?
I want to thank staff for following up on that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
General plan update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Given that we had a relatively brief agenda tonight, I thought I would give you a more detailed update on the general plan and some of the happenings that have occurred over the last couple of months. So just as a quick background, as you're aware, we initiated the general plan update in the fall of 2010. And the original scope of work was quite ambitious and included a comprehensive general plan update along with a new zoning ordinance, a new local coastal plan, a climate action plan, design for the Village Hotel, an environmental impact report, and a host of supporting studies and reports. And the original work plan called for simultaneous adoption of all of those studies and work products. In March of 2013, staff presented a draft land use element to the city council and we heard a number of concerns from both the council and members of the public, including that the plan was overly specific. There were a number of concerns about the design of the proposed Village Hotel. A number of folks wanted to see an increased emphasis on city landmarks, amenities, and facilities, and more emphasis as well on land use compatibility issues. And then there was other miscellaneous cleanups and inaccurate figures as well that we were required to clean up. Despite of some of those areas of disagreement, there were some pretty significant areas of general agreement. The format and framework of the land use element, most of the land use designations, as well as the goals and policies, generally had agreement from the council and members of the public. And so that was encouraging. So based on the feedback that we received, when I came on board, I audited the general plan to determine how the plan was doing in terms of its status, its budget, and schedule. And based on my assessment, I presented a revised work plan and schedule to the city council on June 13th. The council accepted the revised work plan and schedule and did direct staff to return with additional budget information. So on July 25th, we returned with additional budget information and a revised land use element that was more or less a redlined illustration just to demonstrate how the changes would be placed into the document once we moved forward. So the revised work plan, the approach that we're taking is to really develop distinct layers of regulatory, regulatory framework for the city. And that's all based upon the general plan being the foundation for all the other ordinances and plans that the city has. And those are founded on, you know, enduring visions of the community, guiding principles, broad goals and policies. The zoning ordinance and other implementing ordinances, as you well know, contain your development standards and your land use regulations, which are implementing the broader goals and policies of the general plan. And then as you move up the pyramid, you get more specific into design guidelines where you can regulate site design and architectural standards. And then, of course, when you get the project, you looked at individual community character issues, land use compatibility, bulk and scale, and those types of issues. So the original work plan really kind of blended a lot of these land use regulations together under one document. It appeared to me, based on some of the comments that we heard from not only council but members of the public, that a lot of finer-grain details were still in disagreement and we still had a lot of outreach to do to build consensus on those while we had more agreement on some of the broad policies that would be contained in the general plan. So one of the approaches that we're going to take is we're going to phase the work plan to prioritize completion of the general plan. In order to do that, we're going to decouple the general plan from the zoning ordinance and the local coastal program. This will allow us to concentrate our limited resources and develop a more manageable work plan to get the general plan completed. It'll also provide us an opportunity to do more outreach and discussion on the zoning ordinance. And much of that work, we're going to be returning to the planning commission and seeking your guidance and ideas on how we can best tackle some of the zoning ordinance changes and cleanups that need to be completed. The zoning ordinance local coastal program would be adopted following general plan adoption. I think that provides us an advantage of not having a moving target. As it was, if you had a change to the general plan, it would filter all the way through to your zoning ordinance, local coastal program, and any guidelines. So you're more or less chasing changes. This way, we'll have a stable, completed general plan for which to base our implementing ordinance on once it's adopted. And it's also allowed us to initiate the general plan update EIR. Until we had a project and the zoning ordinance was far enough along, that process was on hold. And it's a critical path element that consumes a lot of time. So that process has begun now. In terms of the content with the general plan, we want to keep the general plan general in nature and again, focus on the broad goals and policies. And the idea is to be flexible and adaptable so that as change occurs and different decision-makers sit in your seats and at the city council, that they'll have the ability to implement policies and they won't have to require numerous general plan amendments if things change. So we want to provide our decision-makers with maximum amount of discretion. We also want to focus on preservation and enhancement of Capitola. Capitola is generally a built-out city. There's very limited opportunities for density and intensity increases. And based on what I've heard, I don't think there's a lot of desire to see increased densities or intensities. So the general plan is going to be proposing only modest increases, primarily along 41st Avenue. Those will be policy decisions ultimately that you and the council will weigh in on on what the appropriate amount of intensity or density increases are there. We will be looking at adding more sustainability and accessibility improvements throughout the city. And of course, we're going to want to modernize a number of the elements of the general plan to bring it into conformance with current legal standards. In terms of the revised land use element, we're going to reorganize the document and organize it based on land use designations rather than special study areas. As you recall, the special study area is really focused on the commercial and mixed-use areas throughout the city. We want to give kind of a balanced, a balanced perspective of not only those areas but also our residential neighborhoods and public facilities that, in my judgment, were a little bit neglected in the first draft. Again, we're going to decouple the general plan from the local coastal program. And the effect of that is going to be that the coastal policies that were in the general plan will now be removed but not lost. They'll just be placed in a standalone local coastal program. Again, generalizing the document, we're going to remove development standards and project illustrations like the Village Hotel design. We're going to push that out of the general plan. And if we want to update the village design guidelines, in my judgment, that's the place it should be. Minimizing redundancy, there was a number of areas where we had repeated or very similar goals and policies to the extent we can consolidate those and save paper and make it an easier read for staff, decision-makers, and the public. We're going to aim to do that. And of course, miscellaneous cleanups. In terms of the budget, the original budget was $892,000. We've expended approximately 72% of that budget to date. There's $245,700 approximately remaining in the contract. When we discussed the budget last week with the city council, we estimated, and the consultant agreed, that it's about 10% over budget at this point. The consultant has committed to complete the project within the allocated budget. They're contractually obligated to do so. And it certainly can be staff's expectation that we finish the job with the money that we have allowed for the contract. And we do anticipate that it will be done.
May I ask a question regarding this?
Sure, of course.
So when we begin on the ordinance updates and all that, is that going to be an additional contract?
No, it'd still be under the existing contract. My best guess, though, is that there still needs to be a substantial amount of public outreach, meetings before the commission with stakeholders. And my best guess is that there's probably going to need to be more of that than what's in the current scope of work.
Okay.
If that occurs, I think Katie and I will take the lead in doing a lot of that work and use the consultant where we need them. But if it's issues of trying to present policy matters to the commission and getting input from stakeholders, I think that's something that our staff can do.
I follow up on that?
Of course.
We've spent 72% of the budget, but have we completed 72% of the work? It certainly doesn't appear we're even close to that.
Yeah, let me. So I did a deep dive into the budget and there was 32 tasks assigned to their scope of work. And so what I did is I categorized them by background studies, public outreach, kind of your visioning process you do right up front when you're preparing a general plan. The plan preparation phases is where we're at today. And then your adoption proceedings and then the rest, the expenses and contingency. 99% of the work has been done on the background studies and public outreach. 64% of plan preparation has been built to date. We did get a complete administrative draft general plan submitted last week. We did get a complete administrative draft general plan submitted last week, so there's been progress. The EIR still needs to be drafted. The zoning ordinance, they have, I would call it a framework draft. It kind of lays out how they envision the plan or the zoning ordinance to lay out. I think there's a lot of work remaining there. And then, of course, the climate action plan. Again, I would estimate that you're somewhere in the neighborhood of 10% of a disparity between budget and product at this point, and they'll have to catch up. And again, just to kind of show it a different way, approximately 45% of the original budget was allocated towards that visioning process, your initial public outreach and background In terms of schedule, the EIR, as I mentioned before, we did initiate it in June. We have our complete draft general plan. The administrative draft is on my desk. We're going to submit revisions to the consultant probably in the next couple of weeks, with the idea being that we'll turn the draft over to the GPAC for review sometime in September, October. We'll give them probably a month and a half they're about to review. We'll reconvene the group to get their feedback, make changes, and then we're going to schedule a special study session with the planning commission and city council with the idea being that we can get comments from both bodies, hopefully make final corrections to the documents, and then bring it back for the commission and subsequently the city council in the beginning of 2014 for adoption. And that concludes my presentation, and I welcome any feedback, comments, questions.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah. It's good to see that you've got a handle on it.
Well, I don't know who created this new vision of the plan, but I really appreciate whoever did getting that off the ground because I think it allows for better buy-in at the broader issues where we're at and when we get to the finer points of projects and stuff to allow that to occur there. So I think that that's a great plan. It was a good presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. The way they're going about it, I think, makes much more sense than the original attack on it.
It feels like now we're going to get our feet back on the ground and we can walk forward again.
I think the original plan can work. It's just much more difficult, and you need consensus to push it forward, and I don't know that they realize that. So we'll get it done. Good job.
Are you getting any closer to a timeline, an actual date timeline for these meetings?
For GPAC meetings and the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the joint planning commission meetings.
I think we're going to be able to get a draft copy of the GPAC in September.
No dates yet, huh?
Not a date yet. I think in the next couple of weeks, we're going to try to set a date, reach out to the GPAC and see if we can get most of the members in attendance so we can hold that. I think the first meeting will be kind of a kickoff meeting where we say, "Here's our draft plan. Here's what you should look for. Here's what we did. Any questions?" And then, you know, send folks off for six, eight weeks to review it and come back and give us comments and criticisms and feedback.
What's your vision for the city council planning commission study session?
I think, I think we're going to try to present a number of the policy issues that we've heard from the GPAC, things that staff has identified and highlight those, and of course, welcome any other issues that you and the city council identify. We would try to present, again, the document well in advance because it's a lot of reading and thinking so that everyone can come prepared, but we'll try to guide that conversation to the extent that we can anticipate different issues.
Is there a joint study session? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. And I anticipate that would be a special meeting.
I watched the last council meeting where you presented this and heard the comments from the council, and the only thing that I felt from the consultant that was totally inaccurate was the outreach part. While it's true, when we first started this, we had a great number of people participate in the first meeting of the outreach. I think it was in the 70s to the hundreds. And in the outreaches that have occurred since, a lot of nights, I've been the only person there at the GPAC. And in fact, the GPAC was not what I would even say at 50% of their members. And I, I think if this continues, this outreach continues that way, there will still be that fight when it's the final adoption. So I encourage, you know, better participation at the GPAC and better advisement to the public in general to... You can't lead a horse to water, I understand that, but we need to get those people that were enthusiastic at first back into the process.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none then? I think we've reached adjournment.
No, I'd like, there's an item there, director's report and then commission communication.
Yeah, that's what I just asked for.
Oh, I want, okay, I'm commi... I have one communication. Brought this up a couple of meetings ago, and your answer was totally adequate, their staff's answer was totally adequate, and now something is occurring out on 41st Avenue at the mall, but I'm not quite understand where the new business is going in behind Chili's. The new front doors are there and the rest of it, but they moved construction out into the parking lot where they're removing trees and parking spaces and things of that nature. And it certainly doesn't look like it's within the 41st Avenue guidelines that were approved. And I'm just curious as to what's happening. It may be making better turning radiuses at the ends of the rows, especially up near the new building, but I, for the life of me, can't figure out what it is because it isn't any that came, anything that came to us when the new facade came for the beauty shop or beauty thing or whatever is going in out there.
So they're reconfiguring the parking lot and the drive aisles or...
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing. It's just...
I actually might have the answer on this one. There, when, when the improvements were made to that site and the new business went in, the, our building official went out to inspect it and they were not ADA compliant. And so I believe they're, they're creating a new staircase with an ADA handle, I believe, or else it's going to be a ramp. Is this to the new beauty supplier?
This is not, I'm not complaining about where they're doing the construction up against the building. This is out in the parking area. It would be basically the aisles and the part that you walk on, when you get out of your car to get to the front entrance, you wouldn't get to the entrance. You'd get closer to Chili's, but it looks like they've removed trees and parking spaces, and they have a payloader in there today and two large trucks full of concrete curb and gutter work and stuff. I just don't remember any of that in the plans.
They, there was an issue with ADA, I believe, on-site, and the building official is having them bring it up to code, but we'll take a look into it to make sure that the tree...
Just send me a memo.
Okay.
Because it's making it very awkward from that part of the parking lot to get to the front.
And one last question. Is the farmer's market at the mall closed now?
It's gone.
It's gone? That's, yeah, I just wanted to make it...
I don't know whether it was seasonal or it just didn't make it.
It didn't make it.
Yeah, it didn't make it, yeah.
And I have one comment before you adjourn, and I'm going to apologize to my peer planning commissioners and to staff. I'm going to miss the next two meetings, the September and the October meeting. I will not be in town for either of those meetings.
And I don't know what time, this is just for you guys. I don't know what, whether you have any GPAC meetings or anything. In the latter two weeks of September, I will not be available, so I just want to let you know that.
And that's actually when I was thinking about going away as well, so...
Okay. I am definitely going, so...
Well, I haven't made my reservations yet, so that's why I was asking. I need to do that, and I need to get the plan going here.
I'll be gone the third week of September.
Sounds like the last two weeks of September are gone.
Don't do a meeting then.
Yeah. Well, we don't have a commission meeting.
You could be here by yourself.
Sounds like a good time for me to go and vacate.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, man.
If not, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not odd so much. I heard her say something about wickedness.
Wickedness?
Did she?
Yes.
Well, they have to confess, don't they, Romans, before they die? So I suppose that was it.
Was she an unhappy woman, do you think?
Oh, I wouldn't say so. Businesslike she was, methodical.
But nothing worrying her that you knew of?
No, no.
No.
But there was that one time, about a month ago, she was in the hall by the mirror putting a coat on for work.
If things aren't all they should be, it's better not to know, don't you agree?
I'm sure that's right, dear.
Everything I've done has always been perfectly straightforward. I have nothing to reproach myself with.
What do you think she meant? I've no idea. It struck me at the time as being a queer thing to say, but people do come out with them.
Oh, yes.
Yes, they do.